...to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
We need to approve minutes on October 2nd and October 16th.
Move to approve, second.
Good move, second that we approve minutes on October 2nd and October 16th meetings. All over the paper.
Aye.
Becky Murray.
Hi, thank you for having us come back. Becky Murray with Communities in Schools, I'm the Executive Director. And we wanted to come and talk with you about what we've been doing in Hagerstown. Emily is here, your superintendent, which we love working with her. And we have Allison King, who is at the middle high school. And then we have Rachel Mauk, who is at the elementary school. And then this is Katie Stephen. She is our supervisor and data specialist. So she has some numbers that she wants to share with you regarding our work in Hagerstown. We felt like it was important for you to know, a few years ago, we were able to increase our hours and we want to maintain those hours. And to do that, we are asking for your assistance, for sustainability, for our staff to maintain the hours that they're in the school building, serving the children. Katie can point out a few numbers that are on that. What did you do with yours? Do you want?
Under the chair.
Under the chair.
Oh, I think I know a few of them.
Okay.
So there's one sheet that's just one single sheet. I have my folder, if you don't get all bobbled up. It's late in the day, you never know what will happen. But the one that's a single sheet that has a lot of graphs on it is from... Can I jump over there? Did I give you one? Yeah. It is from the start of the school year until now. So this is what we've currently done. So within August to today, I literally ran this today. We've been able to serve over 28,000 students in Wayne County. So some of these services are duplicated, so we might see one student multiple times. And we might see a student that's not necessarily on our caseload, but they're within a Wayne County school and we just were able to support them in some way, but they're not on identified CIS caseload student. So that's a big number that we are proud of for this school year. Another number I want to point out is in the packet that is again colorful and it's just stapled with two pages. And it shows the amount of items that we gave out last fiscal school year, so from '22 to '23. And that was over 8,000 items that we were able to give to Wayne County students within the five school districts. And also on that same sheet, right in the middle of the page, is the amount of students we were able to serve on an individualized basis, which was over 264,000 students in Wayne County. We case managed 961 students, so that's over 10% of Wayne County were case managed students. And the difference in a case managed student and non-case managed, case managed students are a lot more thorough in the items that we provide to them. It might be a bed and a bag, which we have to write grants to fund bed and a bag. So a bed and a bag would include pillow, blanket, toiletry items. And all of that is in a compact bag that they would carry to maybe an aunt's house or a friend's house, wherever they're staying for the night. So we provide things like that to a case managed student. We would provide food for a case managed student, any really, any basic need items. We would also do things like help get the neighbor certificate and pay for a birth certificate for a case managed student. So if there's a need that's brought to one of our site coordinators, they could fill that. After filling out consent form with their legal guardian, we would then get them to the resources. The last page, I guess packet that you received is all of our numbers, all of the data from last year as far as the things that we help students and track students for. So we track for academics, academics attendance and behaviors. Those are the three things we have to kind of follow them for throughout the whole school year. And so those numbers are shown on the end of year data report from fiscal year '22, ' And I also have papers for you all if you want them.
Do you have any questions for the site coordinators who are actually in your schools? Any burning questions? Come on, Ryan.
Yeah, I do. So I'm tickled to death about Wayne County. I'm really interested in Hagerstown.
Yes.
Okay? So when I look at the big packet and I look at the Hagerstown elementary schools, I just want to make sure I understand it. It shows your total enrollment for '21, '22, and then total enrollment for '22, '23. And then if I'm reading that right, you had 60 high students in elementary and 64 in the high school last year. And that is now increased for the elementary and decreased a little bit for the high school currently through this year, which I'm assuming is as up to date.
Today.
And so the percentages out there would just be, that's the amount of students that represent the total enrollment.
Ian's got an average of a 10% saturation over the county.
It's 10% per school.
No, it's for this here.
Yeah, we try to, minimal is to reach 10% of your school population in every school that we're in. So we try to at least serve 10% of your school population. Now, many times by the time January, February gets here, we're way over that 10%. 10% is our minimum to make sure that we are getting saturation in the school and finding those families who need us.
And help me out again, so does the teachers identify the kids that they feel that need additional services from you?
Some of them do. Like a lot of times, like the counselor will come to us or a teacher, or if we just see them walking in the door and they don't have a coat on, those are the type of students that we kind of focus on.
Okay.
I think it's a little bit more difficult at the high school level for us to identify them.
I wouldn't say teachers as much in the high school. I'm in the halls, I'm talking to these students, so a lot of the time it's the student that comes, "Mrs. King, I don't have shoes." "Mrs. King, are, I don't know if I'm going to eat dinner tonight. My mom hasn't paid her electric bill, we're getting kicked out." So at the high school, it's the students coming to me and telling me things, and then I reach out to the parent and see what we can do. I work really close with our, both of our counselors at the high school, and we all kind of keep each other in the loop. If they know something that I don't, we kind of tell each other. But at the high school, it's really the student, so I'm always out there trying to build those relationships so they feel like they can come to me.
Okay.
And it's great to have Emily on our board. So Emily sits on our board for Communities in Schools. And so she's always firsthand with the other superintendents across the county also. So her visibility with CIS is just critical as we move forward and sustainability.
When you're academics, where it talks about goals met and not met, what are your standards on that? Is it just to show improvement? Is that a goal? Or is what, what is the goal actually set?
Do you guys want to talk about how you set a goal with a student who's being case managed?
I just sit down and talk to the student, like what classes do you struggle with? And if we choose algebra, we're going to work on turning in those assignments, we're going to work every week. And if last year, at the end of the year, they failed that class, I'm not going to shoot for them to get an A. So we're going to talk about, do you think you can get a C? Or maybe we need to put your goal at a D+. It just kind of depends on the student and how they did the previous year in the class if they feel like they struggled.
Are the teachers involved with setting those goals?
Um, no, it's usually me and the student, but if a student's struggling in that class, I'm always talking to that teacher, like, but I usually just set the goal with that student.
Alan, have you had any experience with us in high school?
Yes, you can correct. Quite often, if I have any.
And you're pleased.
Yes, absolutely.
Some of the kids we follow just for attendance because they're not getting to school. It could be they need an alarm clock because mom shifted and she's working nights, or dad's not in the house, or dad is raising the kids, or grandma or grandpa are raising the kids. And so they just don't hear the alarm on their phone, so we'll get them an alarm clock. It's just simple things like that, all the way up to, I need another human who cares about me and cares that I'm coming to school. And they're, they need somebody to talk to.
So as behaviors, a lot of that just attending school or getting to class or getting their homework in time or?
For me at the high school, I have some case managed students who miss a lot because they have five in-school suspensions during that nine weeks. Or they've missed because they've gotten into a fight. And so when they're there, we're talking about how to manage that, how to manage their anger. You know, come to me if you feel like you're going to react in a way that you shouldn't. So when I do behavior, I'm kind of following those students who have missed a lot because they've got ISS or OSS, or those students who are constantly being insubordinate for cell phones or things like that. So that's, when I follow behavior with a student, that is more on the line of what I'm talking to them.
How about the elementary?
The elementary, we don't, it's harder at the elementary because the kids, you know, when they go to ISS, they don't, they stay in ISS and they don't really get out of school as much as the high school. So it's harder to work with them. But we don't have, like, I don't deal with the behavioral as much as probably the high school does. Mine is more focused on academic at the elementary and working with the teachers and getting their basic needs.
How does Community Schools work with the teachers? For instance, Alan's a teacher at the high school. Do you guys workshop with the teachers, see what works, what's not working, how you guys can come together and, you know, saturation rates are what they are. But what's, what's your guys' process with that? Is there any teacher interaction with you guys?
I always email all of the high school teachers, kind of let them know what students I'm working with that year. A lot of students will flow over from year to year, but then I have students that are doing really good and they don't really need my assistance that year. So I always email teachers right away, this is the list of kids I'm working with, if you need me or they need me, so they know. And then I always ask, like, if you see a new student, if you see something new, like, let me know. I email teachers when students are just really struggling in their class, and I'm like, what can I do? Like, what can we do together? I'll come in their class. I kind of, that's kind of how I handle teacher interaction. And like, teachers will pop in my office and say, hey, this student hasn't been in my class a week, or they're, a lot of the high school teachers will do that if they need me, they'll just pop in and say, hey, can we talk about this student?
And at the elementary, I work hand in hand a lot with the teachers. Like, I go in the classroom, I spend a lot of time with the kids in the classroom at lunch. The teachers come to me a lot more. Like recently, we helped a family with their well, they didn't have any water. So Communities in Schools pay their well pump fixed. But I'm in the classroom a lot and the teachers, I think, they know, like, I walk in the classroom, they don't even say anything to me because I come in and sit down beside a student and we'll work on steps. So I work a lot with the teachers there.
I'll say from a high school perspective, it's essentially having another tool in the box or just another resource. We have, I had a situation last week where we reached out to our counselors in primary, but they weren't available. And so we have Community Schools that was available to kind of assist with a situation like that. So they're always there for us and they're a nice handy tool to have.
You mentioned the well pump situation. Just out of curiosity, do you guys work also with the township by chance, our township trustee? Okay.
Yeah. Yep. We're usually a last resort for things like that because I don't normally have that kind of money.
Right.
So we tried to use all of our partners first. There was no other option. So I made the decision to go ahead and make this repair. Now, what Rachel's being very quiet about is she did a huge thing by reaching out to someone who voluntarily did the work for just the payment of the parts.
Right.
Which was really good.
Yeah.
Because otherwise I don't know that we could have helped the family financially.
Right.
But I wanted to as much as I could. So with her efforts and knowing this individual, he was like, let me go take a look at it free of charge. And he just charged us just for the parts.
So the question to the schools, is the school still fully onboard with Communities in School as far as the yahoo they're here, but also financially as well?
Yeah, yep. So we, obviously it's that sustainability piece with finance, the finances and what does that look like every year? We were lucky enough to be awarded the comprehensive school counseling grant by the Indiana Department of Education. And so that is helping us fund again. And we will continue to reach out grant sources to continue to fund it. Hopefully, we can always fund it and we don't ever have to ask ourselves, what are we, how are we going to pay for this? We also, as a Wayne County Communities in School Board, have an individual, Michael Poi, the superintendent at Centerville, sits on the state representative, who is having conversations with legislatures as well, trying to get it in a budget item that will fund it. But I just, I can't tell you how much of an integral piece that Communities in Schools is to our schools, both of them, but also these two individuals and the community support. These are two outstanding individuals who are perfect fits for our building because just as Becky shared, they not only great, make great relationships with the students and the staff and the teachers, but also those in the community so that we, when we need additional resources, we can connect with those. And I just think it is, to be able to have somebody that is solely focused on eliminating barriers for our kids so that they can just come to school and learn, we'll never be able to eliminate all of them, but we can continue to work towards eliminating those barriers so that they can come to school and just focus on learning.
One question, second.
Any other in front of the questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure. Thank you.
So we normally do a match this time.
We're not doing that this year.
Okay. So what is our support to them annually?
Five thousand.
And we used to do a match on top of that, right?
Yeah. No, that was previously. Well, they only went up to so much.
But we would give another one during that match period, right?
We have a match.
Above the 5,000.
I think that was part of the Wayne County Foundation, right?
Yes.
They did like.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not doing a match. But we have a game this year.
What was, what was that match normally? I mean.
Five grand.
So some, I guess that's what I'm asking. I know we do 5,000 for the year, but some years we gave an additional 5,000.
That was because of the matching grant?
I don't think it was that much. I think it was like two.
So I'm assuming we're budgeted for this next year.
I mean, you can do, do additional.
Additional, but we've already.
I haven't done, we haven't done anything this year.
Not this year.
Oh, we haven't.
You haven't, no. I know, we haven't been approached.
Well, I think we better.
Yeah.
Do something, yes.
Because I called them about the match and they said, we're not doing that anymore because it's usually in November.
Yep.
And so then they agreed to come and talk and then.
So I just want to make sure I got this halfway straight in my mind. We always did five. If there was a match, we would sometimes give an additional $2,000 that would be matched. So if you would take the five and add two, that would be seven approximately, $7,000 we approximately give them.
Yeah.
In the last two or three years that passed.
Yes.
What's sad, they're not going to get the match, but I'm going to make a motion that we give them $7,000 this year, what we've normally done in the past to help them out with this program.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
I thought you were going to second that we donated $7,000 to Community in Schools, all over the paper?
Aye.
opposed?
I'm staying with the numbers.
Okay.
So will you, will you reach out, let them know that we're going to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are you ready? Hardin Hagerstown Fall Festival went well in October, no issues there. Weather did not cooperate the best that day. It was cool and misty rainy, so early afternoon, people packed up and headed for home, which I would have done the same thing if I was a vendor on Main Street. But had a good turnout, had quite a few vendors there. So that's just what we always run into in an October outdoor event. It's going to be great or it's going to be miserable. So Hometown Christmas is coming up, 12/2, that Saturday. There'll be activities at the elementary school. Boy Scouts have done their spaghetti supper dinner. I'm sure there'll be other things that come up here in the next two or three weeks for that. So that is about Hardin Hagerstown update.
What's the hours?
Of what?
The one.
I would say nine to four.
Anybody have anything?
Okay.
Wage and salary ordinance.
Yes.
We have two changes. Luke passed his exam, so he got a dollar rent use. And then Courtney, is that her 90 days? She got a cover also. So that's.
Make a motion that we approve the wage and salary ordinance number 14-2023, as presented. Second.
Can we do that without suspending?
I think you were going to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, yeah. So let's back that guitar. Both of you suspend the rules of governance. Second.
And secondly, that we suspend the rules so we may introduce and adopt wage salary ordinance 14-2023. On the paper?
Aye.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve wage and salary ordinance 14-2023, as presented.
I'll second that one.
I'm going to second that. Wage and salary ordinance 14-2023, except that the date, October 14th, 2023.
All in favor?
All in favor. We're going to get both.
Yeah, both of them.
Oh!
That's all right. It's just.
Okay, I think you're in the exception.
Aye.
All right. So as you all know, we have some meetings once a month, try to go over things. And it's just Chris, Julie, myself, Becky, who try to make sure things are going towards an end. And Becky brought up an interesting program that she learned about. I've done some research and I actually sent Julie an email to the county before coming here. It's a Trex program through the Indiana Association of Counties, which the website didn't have a ton of information, but I reviewed the statutes and it looks good. It's a mechanism for debts in excess of $25 to municipal utilities to be submitted through a clearinghouse that ends up kind of dinging a personal tax refund that goes to the taxpayer for a specific, yep, that's what I think that I found. And so it's just another mechanism that can allow for the utility to receive payments for past due amounts for out of this letting, sending them to like a collection agency or just letting them die off because the chase is too hard for a small amount. So that may be a good thing for the utilities and it was a good find by Becky.
But you could also collect ordinance fines and things like that too.
Yeah, I just looked at the utility aspect of it. I think that's probably the most important part for where things are. But, and I sent Julie some emails and a contact with the association to get some information because some of the hyperlinks just were bad, so we couldn't get the forms. But that was a good one. I anticipate in December, having a final review and comment on a revised employee handbook so that we can go through that and get it adopted prior to the start of the new year. And then just a couple other matters that have come up, working with Chris on a few signage issues in town. They may not be town problems, but certainly trying to be a resource to help people resolve them. And so we're working through some of those. That's what I have on my list is to do. And then you reminded me, the airport reminded me that I'm behind on some finalizing some lease agreements and use agreements, so we'll work on those. And I would hope to have those done by first of the year. I'll just give everybody a forewarning, if something comes up, actually one other matter, I need information from you on a couple of things.
Yeah, we're still waiting for information to come back.
Okay, no, that's fine. So we're in good shape. Just, just random town stuff, I just try to stay involved. But as for anything final for review or approval for all of you tonight, I don't have anything. But the wheels keep turning and I'm trying to get things done. I was just going to say, I always ask for patience and every email I send starts with, I'm sorry. But I'll give you the forewarning, the next like three weeks of November are fairly covered up, so my availability will be very limited until after the Thanksgiving holiday, just with court proceedings. And that's why, one of the reasons I wanted to come here tonight, to make sure you all had a chance to say, well, here, I'm waiting on five things and here they are, Adam, so I can get them on my to-do list, if there are any.
Do we, do we know if there's a cap on this Trex?
What?
Is there a cap on this?
No, there is not.
Okay.
There's a minimum of $25.
I saw the minimum of 25. I didn't know if there's a capped out of a certain map or not. Okay. Interesting.
Good program. Okay, Department of Work and Zions, you got an email from Brad, I assume?
Yes.
That won't be here. That's fine. Has fun on Wednesday, and you sent an email with some information that you had. Chamber?
I didn't make the meeting this time.
Parks?
No meeting scheduled.
Police?
Just a couple things. Piracy went well, we had another large turnout again. It seems like every year, the amount of people that come to town for it seems to get bigger and bigger, but no issues. We had a busy, busy month call-wise, had a couple tough calls. You know, I just wanted to remind everybody that it's, it's unusual for most communities what we have here as far as the way all of our public safety and first responders work together here. We've had, we had a couple calls where we were able to have fire EMS and police on scene within just a couple minutes. And, you know, some calls, that makes a huge difference. It's also a nice, sometimes it's kind of double edged. Being a small community, a lot of times, all these first responders, a lot of times, know the people, sometimes the victims we're dealing with. You know, that can be harder on the first responders, but sometimes it's a benefit to the people we're dealing with when they see a familiar face in those times. And I, I know of at least two occasions this month that that came into play. So that's something in larger communities you don't, you don't see. And I feel like Hagerstown community is blessed that we, we do have that. Also, a big shout out to our town employees that also kind of share some of those hats. One of the calls, you know, we were able to have, three of the town employees was there very, very quickly as well, and that was a huge benefit, you know, to all the public safety that was on scene to have those extra bodies there. That's something else that also you don't see in other communities that we have here. So I just, you know, just kind of reminder that sometimes we forget about the little things like that that we have here that most don't. So, you know, for me getting to see it a lot of times firsthand, it was just a reminder to me also, you know, that we just have a unique situation here that we're blessed in many ways because of that. Other than that, that's all that I have.
You know, just what Keith said, I mean, Piracy, you know, I, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger here in town. We have a lot of people that show up here. You know, our glow necklaces, it's always been a big success as we've been doing it. I had a mother talk to me the other night. She said she was here when a little kid, and we started giving those out now. We're giving them out to her kids. So, you know, we average giving them, like, four to five hundred of those a year. And this year, we had, you know, some Keys guys up there. And, you know, Reed comes up and they bring candy and they, we're all together. You know, so people get to know us and, you know, Keys guys and the medics and stuff that work. So I mean, it's a good thing to have in a situation that we have in town. The runs for October, I was hoping they'd be down, but they weren't. EMS calls were down, but we just continue to kind of stay high on the other runs. Auto accidents, structure fires, running mutual aid calls. So they continue to run about the same. I know we talked about the station grant for the planning grant. I did talk with the gentleman and they suggested that we wait till probably after the first of the year for the next round that comes out. But we would be hustling to get it done by December, so we're going to do that. And apparatus, we were finally get, maybe we'll get Donnie Safefield where to work one of our engines. They found the air leak in it and fixed that, so that was, they got those taken care of. We are planning another fundraiser. The guys, I turned it over to the committee, let them do it. They planned it out, them and their wives, and they're taking care of that. It's a Saturday down at the meeting place, so it's a chili supper they're having. So we're planning on doing a few more fundraisers to help offset some of the costs that we incur as members. So if everybody gets hungry, Saturday, come on down for four to eight, the meeting place. So I will be here, I'll be out of town, so I can attend that in there. So membership, I had to dismiss one, dismiss one of our gentlemen from, we're not living up to his part of the agreement. And he has not showed up or made a run for several months, so we let it go. And I, but I did put on two new recruits as probationary period, so hopefully these young guys will work out. And they know what we expect of them, what I expect of them. And if they can't live up to that, then they're going to be, we'll just keep looking and then let them go. So it's not fair to the other guys that are showing up and doing their. So. And basically, that's all I have.
Airport board?
Wind it down for the year. As Adam mentioned, we're just waiting on the final agreement with the four H. Jeff brought to our attention that they would like to take down the announcer's stand, or whatever you want to call it.
It's.
It's in bad shape, but I think we need to get to an actual written agreement between us and the four H before we actually get that done. So I want to make sure I mention that. Any thoughts?
Kind of interesting when I brought it up. It's hard and nice to see, even wanted to say yes. Not now that I can.
I just want to make sure that we get the agreement in place first before you change what's there.
Right. And it's, I mean, I've got an agreement. We've got some notes from kind of both sides that we're hashing through, so I don't see it as a big hindrance. We should have this done. Like I said, I would vote first of December, at least by the start of the new year, you guys should have a clear understanding of who does what and where you go from there.
Um, please, on that, please agree that somehow we put on there, make sure who it's actually with. It's produced, that's one thing that they don't want is.
The aviation.
Yeah. Whether it's the aviation room or the town of Hagerstown or. They want to make sure then that we are assigned, you write people.
Right.
Whoever it is.
Jeff, is that, is that building safety issue that we should delay taking it down?
Uh, it's not going to ever get used. I mean, there's a point where it leaves as a training facility, I mean, as far as arena. We don't have no plans to have shows there.
It's not in danger of falling over.
No, it's not.
Or anybody.
The structure is fine, the floors are wet and the roof is weak. But this doesn't make a lot of sense to put repairs into something that, I think that's ninety percent. Should maybe it's not fair to a number of the issues, complaints from airport board and can't go to argue it. So if we just remove that, reinforce that. There's nothing to hold. Just want to make sure before we tore something down, I mean, we've done the right thing.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Meeting commissioned?
Yes, we did meet. Mainly working on the welcome sign and just some things like that. Trying to figure out a good location for it. We've got three location, three possibilities. One, that I'm really trying to work on with NDOT. And it's kind of up in behind the existing welcome to Hagerstown sign on the east side. So that's our plan A. Plan B would be moving it across the street to have a section of corporate credit union, which I've been in discussions with them. Our third option would be Mike and Penny throughout the suggestion or the option of allowing us to use like the lower half of their sign and precision wire and putting on a digital sign out there. So those are the three options that we're working on. Like I said, the first one would be locating it. It'd be kind of a bookfold looking sign in behind the existing welcome sign up on the hill as you come in there by the Nazarene Church. So that's what I'm working on, trying to get all the permitting done with NDOT for that.
And me for county manager, okay. Our wastewater treatment plant, I've met with a structural engineer, working on designing a catwalk, steel catwalk system around all of the tanks to make it easier and safer to clean them. They are working on numbering all of our manholes as a request from my then, just so we can better identify which ones are issues or which ones need improvements. With our water department, Luke, our water operator, has passed both of his licensure tests. He is fully licensed now. And we had Jim Soper, who was a former employee here a long time ago. He's been working with us for the past five months, just kind of overseeing the water department with Luke, and he's been a great resource to have on board. We have a weird issue where we have a water service line that's mysteriously running under a church building. So that's something that we're trying to help the homeowner out and resolve that as much as possible. I think it's probably a situation where the church was added on to at one time and maybe they didn't realize it was there or something. But that's been kind of an issue. Our electric department, still doing the tree trimming, been meeting with AEP. Streets department, we were awarded a community crossings grant. Did this year, this one was for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents. And with that money, we will be using it to repay Paul our folk. Also going to be doing a little bit more work on South Elm Street. And also, the third area would be on Harrison Street over by the cemetery. That's pretty bad over there, right by the entrance. So we're very fortunate to get those grants again. Leaf pickup, we do have the leaf truck out. In the past, we've done a system where we've done North Side, South Side, Grayson Heights. As of right now, he's trying to cover the town as much as he can. And I'm telling residents, if you pick your leaves out, they'll most likely be picked up within forty-eight hours. The new truck has greatly improved that process. As far as other things, doing some maintenance here on the town hall. Trying to get our natural gas generator installed before the bad weather comes in. So that will be nice. We now have gas harnesses here on the town hall instead of electric, so we should be able to run fully on generator power. We need to in an emergency, that's my goal. Some other things we're working on right now. I think I might have sent out an email about this. Ball State University, their PBS station, which is WIPB, is going to be doing some interviews of different people here in Hagerstown. It can be like a historical context or projects that we've done or something that's been neat about Hagerstown over the years. And it's a program that's going to be airing on television in March. And so that's something that I'm working with them on trying to get. They'll do, I think they said that they do around fifteen or twenty, like five minute snippets of people telling stories. So if you have any ideas for that, you might want to send me an email. Let me know what your idea is on that. I've got a meet with them Thursday morning. And the last thing Terry Ford has started as building commissioner, and he's right here. Bob's, Bob's showing them all the ropes, so. Trying to, yeah. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I haven't quit yet. Julie?
I just have, we're going to need an additional preparation here next month for, from the LRS to the NBH, just considering a year, we're getting close to the budget. And so, just to let you know, that's around twenty thousand. Yeah.
Okay, our business one is this one. Does anybody else have anything to say? Okay, our next meeting will be Monday, December fourth at six thirty here. All in favor? All in favor? Claims is presented.
Move to approve. Second.
We moved into seconded, that we adopt claims is presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
A vote?
Move to adjourn.
We moved into seconded, that we are adjourned, it's made, all those in favor?
Aye.